Okay, I call media order at seven o'clock. We'll start with a pledge to flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing up, we have this business decision form. Linda, has anyone signed up?
Mr. Patterson.
Mr. Patterson. How you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Good. Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Jared Patterson. I reside at 4412 Sapphire Drive in Frisco, Texas. I'm here not formally introduce myself to you as a candidate for House District 106. I'm a former City Council member, I'm a former City Board member, I've served on the Executive Board of the North Central Texas Council of Governments. I've served three times as a precinct chair of the Republican Party, and I've been a delegate to the Convention of the Republican Party of Texas three times. I'm a small-town boy from Loxborough, Texas. My mom taught school for 38 years, and my dad had two jobs growing up, served on local school board. My brother's a firefighter in Addison. We have three generations of firefighters and police officers in our family. Yes, you can say public service friends in our blood. My wife is a former school teacher. She stays at home with her three children, Reagan, Austin, and McKinley. That's two Republican Presidents and the father of Texas, if you're keeping track. I'm passionate about these issues, I'm passionate about this area, and the issues facing this area. And I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself to you. It's not lost on me that it's a rare place in the world, and it's a rare event in the history of the world to be able to come before an elected body and address them. And so I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. And I'll leave a few flyers up here. It has my cellphone number on it, for those of you who don't have it. Feel free to contact me at any time with any questions that you have, and I'm an open book, and I'd love to know what issues are important to you.
So if I could just clarify, this is Pat Fallon's gone off to the tribe's head thing.
Yes.
This is 106, which is us, right?
Absolutely.
That's what you're, the House seat.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So Pat Fallon is a current state rep, he's running for Texas Senate, Senate District 30, which is not right here. But I'm looking to replace him in the Texas House for this district, which is primarily Frisco, Colony, Little, Lakewood Village, and all the way up to the northern part of the lot. Yes, sir.
It's great meeting you.
Good to meet you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
I appreciate coming out.
Thank you for coming out. You've actually found Lakewood Village, that puts you ahead of the pack.
Well, I gotta say, I was walking today, and this is a beautiful community. I actually called a realtor on one of the lots, but it was like $325 for a vacant lot.
Hey!
It's far out of my range right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled by an opportunity to just comment on the proposed impact fee ordinance. Part of the regulatory requirements when we adjust impact fees is that we have to follow a very strict procedural order. Stepping through them, we've progressed through about seven of the eight steps. This, I believe, is probably number seven. So the floor is open for any public comments on impact fee, the impact fee changes were made. Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close it, second?
Second.
Second, for Jared, always in favor? Yeah, thank you. All right. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have the ordinance calling for the election, we have the minutes of overnight, and we have the updated House Record for Renewables. Any questions about the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion for the consent agenda?
One. Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda?
All right, and a motion? And second, okay. A motion and second on the consent agenda, always in favor? Yeah, very good, thank you. Okay, moving on along. All right, next up, we're on the regular agenda, consideration of the audit of the 2016-17 fiscal year, and Mr. Wayne Neighbors is the, or independent auditor, and Wayne is here to discuss the 2017 audit.
Mayor, Council, thank you for another opportunity this year to serve as your external auditor. First thing I wanted to say is that the City Council in City of Salina is not nearly as well taken care of as the council members in Lakewood Village. We certainly don't get stockings, and we absolutely don't get cookies. So, congratulations.
We'll share, put them with you.
I'm here to present the audit report. The blue binder in front of you, I put one on each person's desk there in front of you. So, if you'll turn to page one, we're going to start with the independent auditor's report, also known as the opinion letter.
Is it readable, or? Okay.
There's several paragraphs to the opinion letter. I'll just step through them fairly briskly. If there's anything in particular that you would like to speak about, just let me know. I don't know if I can work this thing or not.
There is one. There is one. Turn around.
No. There we go. There we go. I'm gonna count it, not a technical count. So, the first paragraph here states the scope of my audit. We audited the financial statements in each major fund of the Towne-Lakewood Village as of September 30th, 2017, and related notes to those financial statements. The second paragraph, management's responsibility for the financial statements. This is a key part of the letter because it's very important for the council of a mayor to understand that I'm auditing these financial statements, but these financial statements are your responsibility. You're responsible for the presentation, you're responsible for the fair presentation, the preparation, you're responsible for the accounting principles that are used in generating your financial statements. You're responsible for the presentation, and you're responsible for the fact that they're not materially misstated, whether to, due to fraud or error. So, it might seem like I'm throwing everything on you, which I am, but my job as the auditor is to perform an audit and express an opinion based on your financial statements. And so, I plan my audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards in the United States. Part of that audit means that I do sampling, I obtain a reasonable but not absolute assurance that your financial statements are not materially misstated. Having said that, we have guidelines and checklists that we have to go through so that we're consistent with every other audit that is promulgated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So, given that, we plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. The opinion paragraph down below, scroll up, right here, says, "In my opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information in Towne-Lakewood Village as of September 30th, 2017." So that means basically, in essence, you've got a clean audit. If there are any questions about the opinion letter, I'm happy to entertain those now. If not, I'd like to move on.
I do. Maybe it's because I'm...
I love it.
...meeting you for the first time.
Sure.
My name is Elizabeth Shields, and so I dissected your report.
Okay.
One of the things is that you said that you checked each major fund. So, major funds...
Major funds.
There's three, right?
There are. General Fund, the MDD...
And the total.
And the mortgage reserve.
Okay. Did you look at bank statements regarding those general funds?
Yes.
Yes, okay. How many bank accounts are within those general funds? Is it one per fund?
Oh, no, there's multiple.
Multiples? Okay.
Sure.
Are there other bank accounts that are not part of the major funds?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, okay. So they're all pertaining to the three major funds? Okay.
I think I'll probably answer some of these questions as I go on through.
Okay.
Was there, is there anything else specific to the letter?
So, on the last part, it says other matters. It says that these are limited procedures, that we have applied certain limited procedures to the required supplementary information in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. So, correct me if I'm wrong, you're just using limit, limited procedures, but there are other procedures that can be used that maybe encompass some more defined or more detailed...
No. By limited procedures, what we mean is we basically, on the, on the management's discussion analysis, and on the budgetary information, basically, is, it's not really audited information. We make inquiries, we try to give you summary-type information that helps a reader to maybe better understand what's going on in the city. And so, for that reason, it's not part of the quote-unquote "basic financial statement structure framework" that the GASB promulgates. And so, we apply limited procedures so that we'll have a good understanding of what is in those notes, in those summary and introductory paragraphs, but we don't give any assurance on those introductory paragraphs. A lot of that is written by the city, by the management, and so, you know, we don't apply audit procedures to that information.
So, Ms., let me, let me clarify. So, under the audit rules, the financial statements are, you know, exactly what they have to be and what they have to require, and those are hard and fast to audit. Then in the audit profession, they say, just giving a table with just the numbers on it isn't sufficient. They want you to add some discussion about it, they want you to put it in context, they want you to describe things about it. That's called MDD, Management Discussion Analysis. They want you to kind of put it in context, but it's not, they're saying, it's not his role to audit that discussion about, you know, forecasting will we fix property taxes and revenues in the future. They want you to get some guidance, because normally, you know, for government, they want the citizens to, or something picking it up, like a bank. This is what you think the future holds, this is what you think, you know, how you're going. They want you to get some guidance, but it's not plausible. So, all I can do is look at it and say like, gee, you know, you're forecasting a 9,000% increase in property taxes, that's probably not, that's what he means by limited, but we have to provide this kind of extra information, kind of soft information, it's required.
Okay.
But he has to say, all I can do is kind of look at it and see if it smells right, but he's not...
And a lot of the summary information comes straight from the financial statements.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the stuff that's in here are definitions, right? And also, it was more like the town telling you what happened.
That's exactly right.
So...
That's why it's called a management's discussion analysis.
Right. So, yeah. And then, in that same paragraph, you know, it says, "We do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the information because the limited procedures did not provide us with sufficient evidence to express an opinion or provide any assurance."
That's right.
Okay.
That's exactly right. Okay?
So, Wayne, let me ask you a question, sorry. Exact same question you asked last year. What would it take to get an opinion from you?
You can't, because audit procedures don't allow us to express an opinion on that information.
Gotcha. Same answer as last year.
Yeah.
So, what would it take for this council to get an opinion from someone?
There is no, there really is, your financial statements, the, the information is basically taken from the financial statements.
Right.
If you think there's something misstated in the management's discussion analysis, then you probably should talk about that amongst yourselves.
Well, I think I'm asking control-wise, internal control-wise.
Okay, specifically?
How many people did you meet with before you did the audit?
How many people did I meet with before I did the audit?
Yeah, or were you part of the procedures?
I met...
Last year, not with you, or...
I met with Mark and Linda.
And so, I'm asking this from a town perspective, is there more that we could do to ensure that our finances are stable? It's nothing to do with the audit, man.
Yeah, I...
I'm asking your...
Yeah, I, I tell you what, let me finish the audit presentation, and then I, then I may be able to answer questions based on my personal opinion and not as an auditor.
That sounds good. And then, just so you know, we just received it, we haven't had time to review it, I don't know when we completed it, but I got mine on Monday night, so Tuesday morning, I'll put it up. So, a lot of us, I don't know how much time this has been...
And some of that's because your council meeting was canceled for January, so we had to get this in for December.
But, yeah, he had other, he had other clients...
Yeah, they, we had to, we had to, we had to be somewhere else. Last year, we put you in January and put them first, so this year, we put you first and put them in January. So we had to get the report out, and so...
Well, I appreciate the experience, and that, it's just that we haven't had much time to absorb, that's all.
Okay.
Now, the other thing as well is, you know, Wayne is not making up. The AICPA makes these letters. He's not creating these, and there's not a comma out of place in this letter. This is absolutely standardized from the AICPA.
That's exactly right. Every auditor uses the same letters. We have to, for consistency purposes.
Right, so he cannot freelance this.
You have, you have to understand that every audit has to be done using the same procedures, the same checklist, the same regulations, the same note disclosures. All of our audits have to be comparable to other municipal audits. So, you have, you have a, a set of rules that you have to go by. That's one of the reasons why the General, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board was formed, so that they could make sure that the same standards are applied across every single audit. We have to undergo a peer review every three years, and so, I'm audited. My audit reports are audited by a peer group that is appointed by the Texas Society of CPAs, under the guidance of the American Institute of Certified Public Accounts. So, if we don't do everything the way we're supposed to do it, then we can, we can lose our license, we can be disciplined. So, you know, it's to, it's to our benefit to make sure that we use the procedures that we're supposed to use. Some things that we're not allowed to spread, express an opinion on. Some things that may seem obvious and aren't so obvious, but I'm, I'm happy to try to answer your questions from an individual standpoint. It's just that I'm limited as to what I can express an opinion on outside of the scope of my audit, because I don't want to interfere my independence.
I understand.
Thank you.
Now, I understand why it was written the way it was written.
Yes.
It's because you're not able to give opinion or give, you know, maybe guidance or direction or, you know, recommendations.
Those are manage, those are management functions.
Right, that's burdened on us to determine.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, all right, let's go over to page 17. This is your balance sheet of your governmental funds, and there are two things really that I want to call to your attention on this financial statement. One is what we call unassigned fund balance, $167,597. That is important in calculating what we consider to be your reserve, okay? We take that number, that amount, and we divide that into your total expenditures for the year for the general fund. Now, your total expenditures for the year for the general fund, and we can turn over to page 19 and look at it here in just a second. If you want to turn over there, Linda, to 19, real quick, I'll show you how it's calculated. This number right here, 413,139, if you take the 149, which is debt principal payments out, you get 264,139. So those are your annual expenditures for your general fund, your general funds, general fund and municipal development district. We take that fund balance as a percentage of those total expenditures, and the recommendation is for that to be at least 25%, okay? Yours is 64%, so that means that you're in a very good reserve position in relation to your governmental funds. You've got enough operating capital, basically, to operate for six and a half months, if you didn't have another dime come in.
Can I ask you a question? So does that include the property that was just recently sold, that cash?
The property that was recently sold was the, that was, that was part, no, that was part of the, the non-operating number down right here, proceeds from capital assets, $18499, but it's not part of that equation at all.
Thank you.
So that's the way that we calculate your reserve, okay?
So the reserve, the goal's 25, and we're 63.
You're 64, I'm sure.
64.
Yes.
So 64, you said about six months, so 25 is three months, I think you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we recommend that you have about three months' reserve on hand for your governmental fund. The other thing that we look at is we look at what's called a current ratio. What that says is, do you have enough liquidity to pay your current bills? And so, the way that we derive that, we go back, Linda, to page 17, is we take your current assets, $244,000, we divide that by your current liabilities, $44,000. We recommend that you have a one-to-one ratio at a minimum. So in other words, have at least as much in assets, current assets, as you do as liabilities. You've got 5.5 to 1. So you have five and a half times as much on hand as you need to pay your current bills. So you're very liquid. That's a good position to be in.
And then, yeah, just from my interpretation, the liabilities are the actual liabilities to tell me, you're not including like the condition of our roads, for instance, so if there's a, if there's a situation where we, hey, our roads are in need of repair, we don't include that as a liability until the day that you issue the fund, or you take on a debt to do that, correct?
Yes.
So, is, I just want to be real clear, so as the roads continue down their path of bus life, it doesn't show up in those numbers, correct?
Well, it doesn't show up there, but one of the things that you've done as a city is you've taken steps to assign part of your fund balance. That $31,068 is assigned for road maintenance. So, this is a very good step that you've taken. I mean, obviously, you would like to see it higher, every city would. You know, City of Salina is no different. We would, we would love to have more money in our budget to, to fix roads with, and not have to depend on borrowing and issuing bonds, right? But you have taken some steps towards that end. You, if you have, you know, if you're, if you're cash-rich, then you could probably set aside a lot more money for that, but that's typically not the case with cities. You're not trying to, you know, have a war chest on the backs of the citizens, you're trying to run things efficiently.
So Wayne, the, so we've set aside $31,000 for road repairs. That's assigned, so we've set it aside for that. Now, you took that out when you calculated our reserves...
Correct.
At 64%.
That's correct.
So, if we decided, that's after we set aside money for road repairs, the reserves even above that, so we even have even more cash...
That's right.
If we would not have said, "We're going to spend it on road repairs," and just kept it in a reserve, our reserve would be approaching 100% of, I guess, and would be...
Pretty close to it. I mean, and, and one of the things I was going to talk about here in a minute, I might as well get into it now, is that there's a difference between your fund balances. You've got restricted monies between the MDD and the debt service that are completely restricted to what you can use that money for, okay? Assigned is kind of like earmarked. It doesn't take any kind of formal action, it's not, there's not a legal requirement that says that you have to spend it on X. If you decided tomorrow that you wanted to go and buy storm sirens for the city, if you wanted to, you could use that $31,000, you know, just, just by pure discussion among yourselves and saying, "Hey, this is really a proven thing." It's not restricted. It's assigned, but since it is assigned, we take it out of the equation when it comes to calculating reserve, because we feel like that money's earmarked for a reason, and so we don't calculate that as part of your reserve.
So the reserve is based on what we spend today, right?
It's based on what you have available to spend today.
Yes, on, on what our liabilities are, and it's based on what we would have to pay today, but it's not taking into consideration a major...
Liability.
Liability. Thank you, I was trying to, it doesn't have...
Well, you can't have a, you can't have a liability until you incur expense.
Exactly.
So...
Well, on a balance sheet, for planning reasons, you would.
Well, and I think, okay, and we're getting off the subject here.
Right, but I think it's real important to people to say, when you go to liabilities, it's from an audit perspective, it's not from a town perspective. And that, so I'm... Okay, let me, let me clarify real quick for Elizabeth. Contingent liabilities, contingencies, until they occur, you cannot, you cannot put them here. This is about, think about this as looking back to the game is over.
Well, I understand, I just, I totally understand. The 64% is based on what we owe now, not what can happen tomorrow.
That's what we spend.
That's what, that's what...
No, 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 that's not true. That reserve represents money...
The reserve, six months.
Represents money a certain number of months that you could...
Pay what we owe.
Pay what you owe without having any other money come in.
Exactly, but it's based on what we owe today, not what we...
No, it's based on what you paid in the prior year.
It's a historical.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right. You can't, you can't base anything on the future. You don't know what you're going to spend in the future.
Wayne brought up two different ratios. One is based on your expenses, like your household expenses, how much, how many months of the household expenses you spend.
Right, which they always recommend six months, municipalities...
That's a significant one, essentially. The other number we talked about was a ratio of what you owe to what you have.
Right.
That was the five and a half to one. So you have two different ratios.
And, and certainly, everyone would love it if there was enough money in the bank all the time to where you could fix anything that came up and never have to worry about it, but that's just not real life. You know, so what I'm going to, so if there's no other questions on this particular aspect, I think I'd like to move on.
Sure.
Let's go over to, let's go over to page 21.
All right, is there? Right down, you know, it's, it's hard to hear, Wayne.
Okay, on page 21, this is your, your budgetary comparison, budget to actual.
Is it 21?
Yes, page 21.
I'm just going to drive them out, help me.
Oh, sorry, Wayne.
That's all right.
I'm looking at Linda, and she's looking at me.
She just looks at me and, like...
Okay. So, what we, if you scroll up just a little bit, there we go. You've got, what this is, is this a positive variance of $17,000. What that means is that your budget revenues were $411,000, your actual were $428,000, so you had a $17,000 positive variance to your revenues for 2017. Say the, the majority of that came in through sales tax. You had a little bit more come in through fees and charges, but the majority of it was sales tax. In your expenditures, you had a negative variance, so you were over... In your expenditures, you had a negative variance, so you were over on some things and under on some things. So, your general government, which is, you know, salaries and administrative and things of that nature, you've got public safety, which was a little, actually came in right on, public works was a little bit under, so you had a positive variance. Capital outlay was a little bit more, so you had a negative variance. So, you had a negative variance of $6,700. That means that you spent $6,700 more than you could budget it. Then you come on down, and you've got a positive overall variance to fund balance. And what I mean by that is, if you look right here, where it says net change in fund balances, this is your profit for the year. If you were running this like a regular business, that would be your net income or your profit. You budgeted 114,000, you came in at 130, so you got $16,000 more to your bottom line than you thought you were going to have. That means that you were about 85% effective in your budgeting procedures, you know, your budgeting estimates, which is pretty good. I mean, hitting, hitting things at 85% level is pretty good, especially when the difference is positive. If the difference was negative, you know, it, you'd say, okay, what happened here? But we just, we had more sales tax, I think, maybe some businesses came into town, I'm not sure, but that's a, that's a good variance.
Can I ask you the same question I asked before? So, it appears, looking at that, that we have a positive variance on all this, but is the sale of the property included in those numbers?
No, it is not.
So, it's the 108?
They, oh, I, I take that back. Yeah, the 108, all of this is included in the net income number, you're right.
Right, so...
But this is, these, the budget was 108,499, and the actual was 108,499.
So, we did not have a budget to sell property. There was a period of time in August where it was a rush to sell property, and all of a sudden, we had to do it. Had we not sold that property, where would we have ended up?
You would have, you would have ended up at about one, a little less than 113, not much, but a little less. You got 16...
So, we sold the property for 108?
It was minus 108.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, as you say, 108, so you end up with about $22,000 surplus to fund balance rather than 130,149.
So, then we would not end up with a positive?
But I'm just talking about budget.
But that wasn't, that wasn't in the budget.
Well, a budget amendment had to be made, or it wouldn't be here.
So, two months after the fiscal year closed, there was a budget amendment that came out of the blue to throw 108 in there to make it appear like it was. Had that number not been done, had we not in, in November rewritten our budget, where would we be?
Sold an asset.
If we hadn't sold that asset, what would, what would we be?
If you had not sold that asset, you would have added about 22,000 to your fund balance. You still would have been in a positive, positive nature. Your, your profit...